We're gonna have those six people and that's going to be it.
Well, you kind of ripped us off of the hearing, of the public hearing by their...
Ms. Groves? I'm telling you what's the process is.
Rarely do we have the opportunity to speak directly to you, and I think the community wants to speak directly to you.
Well, I'm telling you what the pro...
So, I'm going to get started.
If you don't want to follow the rule, you won't have any public testimony. Which would you prefer?
Well, you know what? You're gonna have public testimony.
Regardless.
Members of the committee?
You ripped us off of the opportunity to speak during the public hearing?
Is it that easy for you to walk away from the community?
Yeah.
As we started to take... Okay, stop. Stop for a second. Let me speak, you guys. Stop for a second. Stop for a second. Listen, when we asked, when this meeting started, at the time this meeting started, another encampment was being raided and shut down. That encampment held ten families who are on waiting lists to get into these services that you all are supposedly going to apply funding for. And it's a good thing that you're gonna apply funding for these services, but they are not the answer. We cannot have people wandering the streets, sleeping on sidewalks, in unsafe conditions, while they wait a year or longer for these services. It is important that we allow encampments, especially the encampments, the five encampments that have been shut down the last week and a half. Some of them had curfews. Some of them had stores for people to get what they needed. There was safety built in. People inform encampments because they need safety and they do it in groups. And it is ridiculous to tell for the Minneapolis police to shut these... Listen how they shut down the encampment on Bloomington and 28th. They walked up to the tents at the crack of dawn and sliced their tents open with a knife. Now, if you didn't like something I was doing, you couldn't take a ricking ball to the side of my house and knock a hole in there. How the hell is the city okay doing this stuff? We have to stop the Minneapolis police from engaging in this conduct. This is unacceptable. I am fortunately not unhoused. I... You had your turn to speak. It's my turn now. I am fortunately not unhoused. It's my... I'm on my two minutes.
I want to make sure that we keep quorum, and I want to make sure that we do give this space.
I'm on my two minutes now, and I'm gonna take 'em. And I'm telling you something now. The Minneapolis police has got to be stopped. You know, one is happening with what they're doing. Two of these encampments is disgusting. It's horrible. How do you go up to somebody's housing, the only housing they have, the first night of the coldest night of this year, and you're gonna slash the hell out of their tent? Leave them without a tent, sleeping bags, their medication, their IDs, all of this. This is conduct by our Minneapolis police. I'm a taxpayer in this goddamn town. I am not okay with this. The Minneapolis police have to be stopped. And then when people are asking them, "What are we supposed to do?", they say, "Go get in the shelter." People are calling up the shelter hotline. There are no beds. There's nowhere for people to go. They told people, "If we see you on 27th Street, east of Bloomington, you're getting arrested for your existence, not because you committed a crime." What do they expect people to do? Freaking vaporize? This is ridiculous. I am not tolerating this any longer. As the President of Communities United Against Police Brutality, this is an issue for us. We are not gonna continue to tolerate the conduct of the Minneapolis police toward unsheltered homeless people. This is ending up now. I want to invite whoever else wants to come up here and speak, and I don't give a damn about y'all's list. Come on up and speak.
Ms. Jod?
Next is going to be...
No, that's not how it's going to work.
Oh, yes, it's gonna work.
Members of the committee, I'm gonna move a approval of the staff recommendation to fund these funds.
I'm the sister of Mark Haines, who has been wrongfully incarcerated for the last eighteen years.
At the same day that you shut down five encampments, the same day that you shut down three encampments, the Hennepin County Councilmember shut down Gray River Landing, which held thirty-two men that were parole and they were working their way out.
I asked Ms. Jod to speak. Ms. Groves decided she was gonna take over.
Now, we have thirty-two more men that are unsheltered homeless.
She's not speaking.
Well, so, seldom listen to what people have to say. Why don't you just try it for a change? People are passionate. They want to be heard. It's all we're asking. Just listen.
We would love to hear you all's testimony.
Go ahead, Marvina. Go ahead.
So, my name is Marvina Haines. I'm the sister of Margaret Haines, who has been wrongfully incarcerated for the last eighteen years. October 5th, at around five o'clock, I got a call that, um, thirty to forty... Thirty to forty of the formerly incarcerated men was being displaced with no resources. Me and a team of organizers reached out to these guys, formerly incarcerated guys, and were able to get them temporarily housed and also legal representation and new jobs because Better Futures were employing most of their jobs. We have a list of demands. We need these guys who was displaced, security deposits by Hennepin County parole office and Better Futures who had a contract with Hennepin County. We need their deposits returned immediately. We need emergency funding for these guys. They were promised permanent placement through Better Futures. We need them permanently placed. We need mental health resources for this trauma that Hennepin County has caused these guys. And we need the policies to change so if a facility is gonna close, these men have proper notice. They did nothing wrong. Listen.
Listen, Lisa.
They followed their contracts.
You could have the respect to listen to people. You could.
They didn't violate any of their parole. Why did this happen? How do we hold Hennepin County parole office accountable? How do we get these guys permanent placement? Mental health resources.
Ms. Jod, would you like to take your turn?
I don't think you answered the question, though.
Yeah.
Ms. Jod, would you like to speak?
We're all together.
Come on, baby. Come on up there.
And when you guys leave, we're leaving with you.
And I'm currently being evicted from your front steps. This is currently my home.
Ms. Jod, if you'd like to speak now, this would be your time. I'd ask the clerk to put the clock on.
So, the reason I came out today is to listen, and I implore you all to do the same. And what's happening right now is evidence of how hard it is to be heard in this city. People should not have to camp on the steps of City Hall to have attention on the inhumane practices of the city, of the MPD, of the county, but that's what it's taking. People should not have to spend their time in this chamber trying to be heard, trying to make it through Robert's rules, right? To be able to have basic housing and their humanity respected. But that's where... That's right. But that's where we're at right now. So, I'm here speaking to you today both as representatives of business development and economic development because the best thing you can do for the economic development of this city is to get everyone housing. And the best thing you can do is to reverse gentrification. And councilmembers, Chakhti, Ellison, Chavez, I see you out there fighting. Councilmembers Goodman and Rainville, I know you have the ear of the mayor. You all have the power to create change here today. And it shouldn't take all of these people standing up here to be heard, right? And the last thing I'll say is, you know, it's budget season, right? Y'all know I'm all about the budget. And we had the CPED representative up here talking about $1.8 million for Avivo, right? Guess what percentage that is of the MPD budget? Anyone?
Yeah.
One percent.
One percent.
One percent. So, how do we make it happen? You have the resources. You have the power. It's time to listen to the people. All power to the people.
All power to the people!
All power to the people!
Is there Mr. Dobbs here? Damon Hobbs?
Yes.
This is Mr. Dobbs.
Mister Damon Hobbs, sir?
Yes.
Yes, you're on the list next. If you'd like to say something, you have two minutes.
Hello, Hobbs. I've been homeless for probably five, six years now. My first encampment was 28th and Hiawatha. That encampment was there for, since 2018. And Metro Police Department decided to fence us. They took away our privacy. They took away our freedom, and they continuously shut down our camps. The reason why we're not being housed is because we keep getting swept by Metro Transit Police. They changed the laws. They decide to do whatever they want. They just passed a law saying Metro Transit cannot force us to leave our property, and they continually do that. I have a lot of property that I've lost. It's not fair. We do know that we have to do better as a community, but we can't do it if we're forced to look bad, you know? Like, I don't know. It's just not right. And all this money that you guys are talking about, it does not matter to me because I'm not here for the money. I'm here for my respect, my pride, my freedom, and I don't have that. I don't have nowhere to go because every time I put up a tent, there's a problem.
Thank you, sir, for being here. Ms. Groves? Please, you have two minutes.
My house currently is residing on the front steps of this building. Right now, as we speak, everything I own, I don't even have shoes on right now, is being taken by the police. We are being evicted. We are given a notice that says that there's no camping or sleeping on City Hall property. I'm not camping. I'm living here because the city provides nothing in resources. I have been on housing list for over a year as an unhoused person. I have, in the last week, I've been evicted three times. Think about moving everything that you have three times in one week. I'm exhausted. All of us have a right to be housed, to have a place where we can raise our families, a place where we can rest our heads, a place where we can even just have resources available to us. But every time the police come, especially in the encampment evictions where they come in force, a hundred officers in, with SWAT support, coming to evict a dozen people in tents who have nothing, and they take away every belonging they have. They have five minutes. They can't take their tents, which is the only shelter we have. People are dying out here. If you are at any of these encampments and you see what happens after an eviction notice and you see the amount of pain and addiction that just increases to crazy levels, and people are dying out here because there is no support.
Fifty-five overdoses in seven days.
Fifty-five in seven days.
Three people are dead.
And that is directly related to what is going on here. You are putting your money and faith in organizations that are not really informed by people who they're trying to serve. If you give someone something they don't need, is that a good thing? It isn't. It becomes trash. It becomes something they don't, they can't do anything with. You need to ask people who are out here what works for them. You need to find dignified housing that has nothing to do, that isn't dependent on surprise, that isn't dependent on these things.
We're gonna move on to...
Can I have one quick question? Where can I go? I'm here. There is nowhere I can legally rest today. There is nowhere I can go to sleep. There is nowhere I can go to pitch my tents so that I have some sort of privacy, so that I can wash up. I have no water. I have no food. I have no electricity. I have none of those things. And I'm being evicted right now. Tell me where I can go.
But I will stay after testimony to talk to you.
Thank you.
Where can I go? I don't know the answer to that, but I will stay after testimony to talk to you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And we've got four minutes.
But I would like the council to take that up. They're putting money in the pockets of people who are not... Isn't the office and house homelessness was here today? They knew nothing about the evictions. They had no pre... They had nothing at all. And they... It's just insane.
And Councilmember Ellison, I want to point out, you called the homeless hotline after those three evictions last week. We called. There was not a single bed to be had in the...
Ms. Jod, are you mistaken?
I want you to know that.
Thank you.
And you go ahead, baby. You just talk. Just talk. Because they need to listen.
Can we please all, everyone here in this room, just take thirty-three seconds of silence for all that we have lost and but for all that we can gain? Please.
Listen.
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 First of all, my name is Angelique Marie Boemaster, and I met two of you, I know personally for sure, just recently. First thing I gotta say is I'm all about facts and not fictions. And the facts are this, right? Remember that young gentleman was up here saying they offer places to put your belongings and stuff like that? It is fiction because the facts are only today, less than an hour before I met you guys, is the first time that was ever offered to any of us, and that's not okay. Second of all, I was told by the, not Police Department, but your security, just yesterday, that we had permission to be on that side of the City Hall. By the way, I have it all recorded and documented. He came out and was giving me heck for absolutely no reason, but that we had permission to be on that side where the white rail was. Another fact is, do what you say. Bottom line. Good, bad, right, or wrong, if you can't make it happen, tell somebody you can't make it happen. I know for facts that me and probably, I don't know, twenty-four other people helped out. We'll go all the way back to the park board, okay? And then it's the city's problem. Then it's the county's problem. Then it's the state's problem. It's all our problem. This is everybody's problem. It's something, there needs to be a change. Maybe the change could be, these people over here thinking they know everything, maybe they should come down to earth and speak and engage with people and actually let them, you know what I mean? Help us help you so we can have a better future for everyone. I mean, do you guys understand that? Help us help you guys for a better tomorrow. It's not about typically me or my children, but my grandchildren, my great-grandchildren. A change needs to happen, you know? And I want to discard a bunch of like, Viva and whoever else. I know for facts, they don't do their job. I know for facts, they don't do their job. This is what I know. You guys are kicking us all out when we're up here? Are you kidding me?
I'd like Ms. Means to have an opportunity.
Are you kidding me?
I would like her to finish speaking.
Then she'll be eating.
You invite us here to throw us away?
Ms. Goodman, please understand...
Ms. Means, do you have something you'd like to say?
The email that Sarey got...
Please sympathize with us.
We're not going to be debating you. Ms. Means, do you want to speak?
We're the ones that's been kicked out.
Lies.
The resources that the people at the North Loop encampment had to make money, you guys stole, and nobody will tell us where they are, okay? These were resources that had ten people doing lawns, doing snow removal, everything, and nobody can tell us where they are. And why is that?
My problem, all, everything I own is looking at.
Why is the county, the city, the state asking me to peacefully help with these encampment enclosures? But then again, they can steal and rob. What is this doing to everyone?
And I might add that there has been a ruling in an ACLU lawsuit that tells the city, "You may not steal these people's property," and yet it continues day in and day out with every encampment shutdown. How is it safe for people to sleep on the streets as opposed to being in an encampment? This is nonsense.
Y'all just keep returning to the same strategies handling this issue instead of coming to the table with the community. You do not listen to the community who actually have real-world solutions for this because they're in it. They live it, and you don't want to listen. How can you... And to the sir that was speaking earlier, how can you judge undignified when you give nothing and destroy everyone's belongings? Why do you spend money on fences and loudspeakers and all these anti-homeless measures, like all the leaning benches, the Bobcats, everything? Hundreds of thousands on these evictions, on encampments that we pay for. I do not want to pay for genocide on my fucking neighbors. It's genocide. It's acts of genocide. This is stolen land. Immunity homeless people are people of color, indigenous. This is not...
You got this.
You guys just give placating words. Well, we'll take care of it. We're gonna do this. This is what we're gonna do. And then you come back out in the street violently. People are dead because of your fucking actions. Blood is on your hands. People's bloods are on your hands.
It's amazing how they have a shortage of Minneapolis police, but...
So, I'm committed to staying after, I'm committed to staying after we... And I want to listen to every single one of you guys that are down here. Thank you guys for coming here today. I also want to make sure that this quorum, that we make sure that we're, this is, this is, these here are some of the upstream solutions. It's not everything. By no means is that everything, but I want to make sure that we move this. And after we move this, I am committed to staying here and listening to everybody that's here. And so, I'm gonna make the motion to...
These folks won't be on TV, and it won't be out to the public.
I mean, but I... Once we, that'll happen no matter, that'll happen no matter what if we lose quorum. And so, I want to make sure that I'm gonna make the motion to move item nine.
I'm on the list. I'm on the list.
I'm making the mo, I'm gonna make the motion to move item nine, and then I will, I will come and listen to the rest, and I'll ask the clerks to call the roll. I want to make sure we get through this before we lose quorum because then testimony will be over either way.
I signed it.
So, I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the roll, but I am gonna come down and stay after, after...
Councilmember Rainville?
Two minutes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Right now.
Tell them to not do that.
Tell them to not do that. Demand a complete moratorium on evictions immediately.
When it hurts to hear one last person that did sign up, come on, guys.
Chair Goodman?
Aye.
There are five ayes.
That motion is approved. Signal further business before us. We are adjourned.
Why don't you just donate more donations to rich people?
Yep.
Please stay.
Why did you end the meeting?
My name is Simeon Aiken. I live in Ward Six. I helped organize a supply drive yesterday to meet legitimately. We did yesterday in one day more than the City of Minneapolis and all of these upstream solutions the City of Minneapolis has done in a month, in a year. And I know that because I've been talking to the people that live here now. They live here now. What are you gonna do about that? You can't keep moving people. And development and coordination and people that can't answer a simple question, even though they come here with a million complicated words to supposedly do so, is not only counterproductive, it's wasteful. I pay taxes here. I'm thankfully... Give people free, public, accessible, low-barrier housing now.
Don't sober.
Yeah. We, we demand, we have one demand.
Sit down!
He's still speaking.
Where are you going? Shit on you! Shit on you! Shit on you!
This is showing you why we cannot...
Shit on you! Fucking evicting! And not even listen to the community. Listen to the people!
This is why you don't fucking phone stuff.
Our guys!
This is why. Because my councilmember is a lazy asshole who doesn't do shit for the community unless you're a goddamn developer, okay? If you're a developer, come over here and suck at her damn teeth because that's what she's about. But if you're with the community, she don't give shit about you, and she spent that way this whole time. Rainville, yet another one, that doesn't give shit about the community. Let's be real. I'm sorry, I like you guys, but let's be real. These people that are the real power in the council do not give a damn. All they want to do is hand money to Hennepin County, who doesn't want to do the shit they're supposed to do, ever. They have these tiny-ass programs that serve a tiny number of people. In the meantime, our Minneapolis police are getting paid huge amounts of money to go and uproot people on a daily. Where are these people supposed to sleep? Leave them the hell alone! Stop paying the Minneapolis police to do this shit.
You know what? We see what's going on. It's like, it's like history repeating itself over and over again. That's all we have to do, organize, get mobilized, and we can vote these people out of office. That's all. Because all this stuff, all, this is like, we just repeat itself again. They know what's going on. They know exactly what's going on. So, the only thing we can do is, is get mobilized.
I'll never forget.
Get online, vote in our office. Start, if you got to vote Republicans, here, vote Republican.
We need, we need solutions soon.
So, they're not gonna, you know what? They're not gonna give us solutions.
It would take, it would take a phone call from Andrew Jenkins or a vote... Done the most. But unfortunately, the people with the power left the damn room, okay? The mayor's office, I'm saying, you know, they're beating the hell out of us in here? They're beating us down because we can't have solutions? Tell your goddamn cops to stop harassing and evicting people right now. You can't even...
Can we get us one hour with the mayor?
Yes. They can't get an hour with the mayor. What you talking about? We can definitely try.
Ten minutes. Ten minutes with the mayor.
This is a strong mayor, you know, who's weak as hell hiding under his umbrella.
These people are willing to give their voice heard into the same sort of order supposed to be, telling the police what to do. So, you're saying that you, like, can't make it happen? Then, how, like, what, what, what are the steps for this and be done? Because eviction moratorium is like the main thing we're asking for right now. What, it's a good first step. What are the steps we need to make to make it happen?
Like, can you tell Hennepin Security to stop?
And related to eviction moratorium, we'll be providing the appropriate services in those encampments so it's not whatever this man said, "Oh, terrible, undignified and dirty and whatever," all that crap. It's a lot more undignified than having all your crap stolen from you. You're walking through the streets with no damn where to sleep, okay? So, let's give people the services they need at the encampments. If you don't like to see encampments, build fucking more of these buildings and put people in them, okay? The solution to the unsheltered homelessness, build some fucking housing for people, you know? And I recognize that the three of you are listening, and I appreciate you listening. I'm not beating my mind in. I'm trying to tell you what we think the solutions are, okay? And they're short term and long term. The short term is stop these damn moratoriums and give people the services they need. I mean, Southeast Bay evictions, and give people the services they need within the, within the encampments. And those are the simplest thing the city can do that right now, that they're literally doing right now.
We did yesterday. We did yesterday. When we say give people the things that they need...
...the routine right now.
Yeah, when we say give people the things they need, we're not saying give them recommendations for somebody who could possibly give them a flyer with a long URL and a .org at the end. We're saying give them food.
But people who don't have phones and computers.
Give them water. Give them a place to go, whether it's a building or not.
Give them a bathroom.
We're saying meet the needs. We showed you how to do it for twenty-five hours yesterday. That's how you do it. Fuck these resources, fuck these acronyms, fuck these organizations. They are not working. They're wasting their money.[1542.33]
That is how you meet the needs of the people.
We never see these people every day that they find.
It's a four-part sanitation station.
I have just been saying, every single time they evict, they have the same excuse. They say, the homeless outreach team, the city, whoever it is, they went over it. They offered services. They offered services to this many people, to this many people. That's all I'm saying. They have no fucking statistics. If people are being offered services, the same people, by the way, who every single, like, it's the same people getting evicted every other week. If they're, like, if these services are being offered every single time and the same fucking people are not being housed, something is wrong with the services, not the people. And every single time, the city is blaming the people.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep. Something that you could do, something you could do is hold these people, I don't know if you're the person that spoke earlier, if you are, these people accountable for the lies that came up here, blatant lies, and said that people reach out to them. That is bullshit. The cops don't let people in at all. Anyone who has to go in there has a keeper that needs to be. So, these people are accountable. I, I appreciate that you tried to get this guy to answer a question. I wish you would.
Couldn't answer a damn thing.
But, but you could, you could check in. You could send him an email every goddamn day and say, hey, how many people went to this eviction?
Look, I, I, I'll say the, the, these systems are big. The, 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 the staff that were up here earlier, you know, I, you know, that were up here early to talk to you guys, that, these are people that I, that I trust and get answers from, right? And so, I don't want a disparate staff. They're up here doing their job. They're up here following the direction that they get, that they get from, you know, from the mayor's office, from their department leads, all that kind of stuff. And so, I, so I don't, I want to make sure that when we get up here that we're not, you know, disrespecting the folks who do the day-to-day work. I want to make sure that, I want to make sure that I'm not, you know, because I, but, but I, but I think your frustration is valid, but I want to make sure that I'm not.
That it is to be sleeping in an encampment has gotten even wrong. I'm not talking about you personally. I'm not, you don't need to. I don't know that. I don't know his name. I don't even know any of that. But a person that sits there and tells you that having nowhere to be, having no possessions, and wandering the streets and sleeping curled up in a si, in a doorway in a sidewalk is more dignified than being in an encampment with support from other people, is bullshit. Sorry. He is bullshit.
I, I think that was its intention, but I, I understand what you're going through.
That's exactly what it is. Hey, I got purpose in here.
I believe Sarey was here, right? She, she left.
She left the second the meeting ended. And she's the one who always says they offered services, and that's what puts her to sleep at night.
And she put those three images at the bottom of the email. The third one was not even from that day. The second one was from a tent that had not been touched in months. And the first is from a guy who had to leave his RV in five minutes. So, she's deliberately making you all not identify with these companies in camp. And, and one of them, one of the subcontractors clearing the encampment said, this is the cleanest encampment that I've seen. Usually there's needles, and, and I cannot believe that they are clearing this encampment. It, like, bam! And he was like, as they were gingerly removing this gentleman's rep jacket.
And the reason they cleared it is so that they can do it in the development there. It's all about the damn developers, y'all. Y'all know it by now. Who wants the fucking city to goddamn develop? Who brought Lisa Goodman and Michael Rainville, the goddamn developer? Never a question about it. They do the bidding of the downtown business council and the developers, and they don't give a shit about the rest of us, and that's a fact. Including me, who lives in Goodman's district, you know? I'll never forget, she called me over to her house after, right after George Floyd was killed. Ooh, 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 I never paid attention to you. I didn't know this was going to happen. You're a goddamn liar, Lisa Goodman, and everybody fucking knows it. You should never do a fucking thing else. I didn't even try my goddamn shoulder and you haven't done shit since then.
One thing that you can do today, reply to that email with those photos on it and say, you are dehumanizing human beings. Anytime you get an email like that, anytime you see trouble about that, anytime you see shit like that with, with your title, with your office going out to the media, you say, stop. This is not going out. This is dehumanizing.
If that's how you feel.
I mean, you're not dehumanizing.
And the very next thing you ought to do after that is write an email to the mayor and to the Minneapolis Police, uh, Hennepin Chief Hauptman, and tell him, stop fucking closing down the encampment. Stop it now. We are not going to waste any more pop resources on shutting down encampments and arresting people because they have nowhere to be.
You know what, keep going. Uh, Ellison and the councilman, thank you. Thank you so much for actually, actually hearing us out. I, because I understand, because, oh, no, on behalf of, behalf of me and glory, I mean, you know, things need to be done. Things need to be changed. You know, we know things can be changed overnight, okay? Overnight at all. When it, when it's, when it's all said and done, when it's all said and done, we can hoop and holler, hoop and holler, they can shut down the encampment. But what, what we have to do as people has to mobilize.
That's for tonight.
That's what we are going through. That's what we're doing.
And we got to live like that.
No, see, at the, no, see, at the end of, no, see, at the end of, at the end of the day, they going home to their beds. They going home to their nightclub and their, everybody going, they getting big salaries a month. So, by sitting here, that's all, that's all we do, is beating our heads, beating our heads at the table. See, because we still getting the same, I'm just, that's all we get the same results. The only thing, we said our piece. It's time for them to take it to the next street, mobilize, organize, get rid of them. That's all I'm saying.
Hey, actually, I have one, just one really quick thing, and it's just for consideration. It's a possible solution. I was just in Juneau, Alaska, um, long story, but they rely heavily on tourism for their entire economy, basically. Now, their entire city population is literally one one-hundredth of our metropolitan. But they have, they've found that, um, people sleeping and living on the streets negatively affects tourism. And they have come to an agreement and understanding that they have a city-funded and sanctioned encampment. It's got, uh, porta-potties. It's got resources. It's accessible. I'm disabled. Everyone in these encampments is disabled. Every one of them, pretty much.
One hundred percent.
It's, you know, could be a psych disability, but I'm six months behind. I'm going to be in a goddamn encampment myself. So, excuse me. So, that's why we're here today. We want answers. We want solutions. We want ideas and not people running out at us. The Public Information Office wouldn't return my call. I'm out of breath, as you can see. And then this is what happens when we come to the place that all of them tell us to come to.
Yep.
That's right.
And even to public hearings, and then they tell us we can't participate in their sanctioned public hearing, and then she'll decide if we get to talk to them at the all. This is some bullshit. We should have never followed for them, and I apologize to the community for falling for it, because I was trying to be courteous to these business owners or whatever, right? But we should have just said, hell with you. We're going to take over the damn public hearings. Because say that she would have had to sit there and listen to this and run it out the damn door.
You, you were talking about, um, Great River Landing specifically?
Yeah, and so.
Do you have a, do you have a moment? Uh, and, and I hate to, I don't want to put you guys off, but I.
Our lawyer is the counsel, legal counsel for those guys in Great River Landing, just to get out.
Okay. I would love to connect with you real quick, and then, um, and then I, I am running out of time. I don't want.